Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Temple ISD Board of Trustees on April 12th, 2021, beginning at 6:00 PM. First item is declare a quorum, which we do have. Our second item is the pledge of allegiance. Would everybody please stand and face the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Our next item is the public forum. I don't believe we have anybody signed up tonight. All right. Item four is the superintendent's recognition. The first one is alumni spotlight, Jennifer Gosney, class of 1990.
About five months ago, Baylor Scott &amp; White contacted me to see if there was something that they could do to help recognize some of their staff who are Temple alum. And I was able to share with them that we had an alumni spotlight program. And so senior staff at Baylor Scott &amp; White submitted nominations for their staff. And I'm excited that Jennifer Nifty Gosney is the first person from Baylor Scott &amp; White Health through this program that we are honoring tonight. Nifty has an amazing and incredible resume, and so I'm going to go through a little bit of it. But she is currently the Director of Finance for Baylor Scott &amp; White Health, Temple Region. And she graduated from Temple High School in 1990 after attending Thornton Elementary and Bonham Middle School. She's been with at Scott &amp; White for 16 years. Again, I'm going to skip through a little bit of this because there's some things that she wrote that I really want to make sure to share. She has been active throughout the community. She's even teaching through Texas A&amp;M Central Texas and Mary Harden Baylor as an adjunct professor. She graduated from Texas A&amp;M University. I know her dad is super proud and with a Bachelor's of Science in Bioengineering and then received her Master's in Business and Administration from Texas A&amp;M University, Central Texas. Nifty and her husband Jeff are proud parents to Riggs, who is five, and her family includes her parents, Gary Gosney and Linda Gosney, sisters Dandy Scooter and Thumber, and mother-in-law Jan. And both Gary and Jan are here with us this evening. Jan taught at Temple High School for 29 years, by the way, and so we're glad to see you back. What is your favorite memory from when you were a Temple ISD student was the question, one of the questions I asked Nifty. And in true Nifty form, she delivered in her answer. While she said that falling down a flight of stairs in front of her high school crush and 100 other students and maybe forgetting her lines in the one role that she ever got cast in the theater production were very memorable, it wasn't her most memorable experience. That was being a student ambassador for Temple High School to Russia. She said there was an application process and she was sure she wouldn't get selected because being turned down was a norm for her. In fact, she let me know something that I didn't know, that did you know how many times you can try out for cheerleader and get rejected? Apparently, the number is three. And so however, as she said, this taught her, this taught her to really have a sense of determination and to go for it, which is why she applied for the program. And of course, she was selected. And why you would think that going to the different facilities, the Kremlin, the different cathedrals would be the most memorable part, it wasn't. The most memorable part for her was making those memories and connections that would last a lifetime. And she said they even got to spend some time in a family's home and enjoy just different, just time in that culture and meeting different people and spending a day playing with the children in an orphanage. And she said that still brings a smile to her face today. And if she had not, if she had applied and let that not applied and let that fear take over, that would never have been something she would have been able to do. And so this type of education, she said, is immeasurable. And then what does being a Wildcat mean to you? Nifty said you never imagined that you're going to come back home after you leave for college, but she did. And she said, and she can't imagine being anywhere else, that going to Temple High prepared her for real world and gave her a great perspective on life through the eyes of others. She was surrounded by different people from different backgrounds and countries, and she believes that this is an important part of her education as anything else she learned in the classroom. From sports to theater and the classroom, so many different pieces and parts gave her a sense to foster things that were important to her and especially her love of numbers that was fostered through the classroom. And providing students with the opportunity to be well-rounded in life academically, artistically, athletically, and culturally is truly what makes our education system so great. Nifty says she's proud to be from Temple and to call herself a Wildcat and that TISD is a part of me and I was glad to be a part of it. And truly, you exemplify the very best part of us, Nifty. And so we are so glad to honor you this evening.
You like to take a picture. No, you gotta take a picture.
I also just want to say, on behalf of the board, we're so proud that you're one of the first alumni recognized from Scott &amp; White, now Baylor Scott &amp; White, that you went away, but you came back to Temple. And you have definitely made a part of this community. And again, this is very well deserved. And thank you very much for coming tonight and for letting us honor you. Yeah. Did you want to say a few words?
No.
Okay.
She told, she did, this is a lot, yes, she said a lot. She told, she said she didn't want to speak, so I, so yes.
I also don't want to fall down the stairs.
No, no, that's, we don't want that either.
Yeah. You got a couple.
Hopefully I was holding this and I looked thinner.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. And y'all are welcome to leave, but you can stay as well. So pretty cool for your mom, huh, Riggs?
Our next item is recognition, ASBO International Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting.
So Ken and Callan and is Regina here?
Yes.
Okay, no, that's okay. Y'all, but y'all come on up. Y'all come on up. I know, I know. I am pleased to announce that Temple ISD was awarded the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Association of School Business Officials International for the 2020 fiscal year, which makes it the second year in a row for this award. By participating in this program, school districts demonstrate their commitment to financial transparency. Applicants submit a very extensive portfolio application to be reviewed by a team of financial professionals who provide feedback to improve future documents. If they meet the requirements of the program, the document is eligible for the Certificate of Excellence. And a district's participation in this program can help facilitate bond ratings and continuing bond disclosure processes. So at this time, we would like to recognize Callan Vaden, Chief Financial Officer, Regina Rochelle, who is not with us, but she is our Director of Finance, and Kent Boyd, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations for this tremendous accomplishment.
I think this is the second national award, and maybe we've had another state award in terms of finance. I'm starting to lose track of all these acronyms and certificates and things that are coming through. But this department has done a fantastic job. One of the most important things, as you know, we can do as a school district is manage and be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And I have the utmost confidence in this department. They do a fantastic job. Congratulations and keep up the great work. Really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
One, two, three. Thank you. I'd like to.
I'd just like to say, most of this work is due to Callan and Regina. I just get to stand up here. But I, I wish Regina could be here tonight because she does a lot of the work. There's a lot of heavy lifting that goes on into these reporting and these analysis profiles, and they do a lot, and I'm very, very appreciative of what both of them do. So, thank you.
Congratulations, great job.
Did you want to say anything? Going once, going twice. Our next item is superintendent's leadership award, Amy Skopak and members of the Transportation Department.
Yes, if we can have you guys come on up here. There's a little ramp right here, Mr. Ball. Mr. Ball's coming this way.
I was walking the last time you seen me.
I know. Are you sure, would you rather do that? Okay, okay. All right, good deal. So the leadership, sure. Leadership is the attitude assumed by those with a vision to raise expectations who are committed to achieving a goal and whose conviction inspires others through enthusiasm and optimism to reach that goal. This award recognizes those who go above and beyond expectations to serve a cause greater than themselves. And this evening, we are very pleased to recognize Amy Skopak, Temple ISD Assistant Interim Director of Transportation, not for long, and drivers Roger Smith, George Bell, Lindsay Davis, Diane Daly, John Daly, Jolene Pruitt, Stephen Howell, John Cooper, and Clarence Ball as the recipients of this award. February 12th through 19th, 2021, has been dubbed by some as Snowmageddon, Snowvid, Snowpocalypse, and many other names that attempt to describe that very fateful week. Extended power outages coupled with unprecedented temperatures, snow and ice created a situation that made homes unlivable for some in our community. The opening of warming shelters across the area provided much hope, but with the roadways undrivable, how would people get there? This is how people got there. Sacrificing their own safety, this is when this group of individuals literally came to the rescue. Working with the city, our Transportation Department picked up people in need across the city and brought them to more warming centers where they could safely wait out the winter storm. From the elderly to the medically fragile to even some furry friends and everyone in between, these men and women standing before you provided hope for the hopeless in their most desperate hour. And if you know these individuals, you know that they even provided some much-needed cheer, compassion, and kindness along the way.
This is a fun group. They're a lot of fun.
Amy, Roger, George, Lindsay, Diane, John, Jolene, Stephen, John, Clarence, your acts of service above self is what defines true leadership, and your efforts have been nothing short of heroic. So on behalf of Temple ISD, we thank you and present you with the Superintendent's Leadership Award.
Make a few comments. You know, the ice storm was obviously tough on many, in fact, on most, the entire community. And at a time when people were doing all they can just to take care of themselves and their families and their respective organizations, this group looked outside of that and took care of others. They weren't forced to do it. I don't think so. Right, okay. They volunteered when they were called to transport elderly, get people to medical appointments, shovel snow off walkways so people can get transportation. And I'll tell you the thing that I think gets overlooked a little bit, because this is one of those things that can tug at your emotions, the expertise. The expertise required to drive one of those big yellow buses on a sheet of ice and carry people, I mean, there is no way it could have been done without them. There is no way it could have been done. So we appreciate your skill set, we appreciate your commitment to the community and serving those above yourself, and that is exactly why you have the Superintendent's Leadership Award. We are so grateful to not only have you in TISD, but as part of this community. Thank you very much on behalf of everyone. Appreciate you.
We can get it from the spread out, just so everyone's like shoulder to shoulder. Spread out? Yes. Yeah, we can get it, man. Okay. Do you guys want to step forward there? Everyone's toes on the same line, please. There we go. Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Got it. Thank you.
Someone was FaceTiming in over there. Guys, pray their funk, their vitality. You don't want to be on bus with anybody else. You all right?
Yep. I get up and down.
Consideration for approval of the Director of Transportation, Amy Skopak.
Mr. Posey, I'm going to have Mr. Boyd, my good friend and budget buddy, to present this one.
Okay. Thanks, thanks, Joe.
All right. Ms. Skopak, would you please come up here for just a moment? Come back up here. President Posey, Dr. Ott, and members of the board. On April the 8th, 2021, the District Search Committee, including Callan Vaden, Steve Prentice, Katrina Lotz Beach, and Kent Boyd, interviewed Amy Skopak from the field of applicants for the position of Director of Transportation. Following the interview, the committee unanimously selected Ms. Skopak as the lone finalist to be taken to the board for approval as the new Director of Transportation. Ms. Skopak has operated as the interim director since Mr. Patrick Kane's retirement in January. It's nice to see Mr. Kane here tonight.
I'm off the boat.
Since that time, she has navigated the department through the historic winter storm by coordinating transportation efforts with the City of Temple to serve many of our most vulnerable community members. In addition, Ms. Skopak has been successfully addressing the day-to-day challenges of operating an apartment that serves approximately 4,500 students daily. Ms. Skopak has been employed by Temple ISD and the Transportation Department for 15 years. During that time, she has served as a bus driver certification instructor through Region 12 for over 10 years, served as an instructor for the, or serves as an instructor for the Texas Association for Pupil Transportation, and is qualified to instruct and test drivers for commercial licensing required through the Department, Texas Department of Public Safety. Furthermore, she has been very involved with state and local school transportation organizations and ultimately served as president for both the Heart of Texas Association for Pupil Transportation, as well as the statewide parent organization, where she served as a president of the Texas Association for Pupil Transportation. In addition to these service initiatives, she has been faithfully employed by the district and faithfully working to assure safety and security for our students for all this time. Ms. Skopak and her family are lifelong Temple residents. All three of her children are Wildcats, with her youngest set to graduate next year from Temple High School. The Skopak family is true blue, and it's a pleasure to have y'all here this evening. The District Search Committee recommends Amy Skopak as Director of Transportation for
This does require approval. Do I hear a motion?
Move.
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Suarez. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Congratulations.
I really appreciate the vote of confidence that you have in me, and I'm very, very grateful to continue to serve our students and our community for many years to come. So I want to just take a second to introduce my family. My sweet husband Kirk, I couldn't do anything that I do without him. He's in the back here. He's the Fleet Services Director for the City of Temple. My daughter Hannah, there next to him. And then my son Nick, like their wave, and Emily, next to him. And then my sweet mama, can you stand up, mama? That's my sweet mama. So again, thank you guys so much for trusting me with the next step. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Amy, you're going to come up here and shun the car, Hannah.
Yes. And at the same time, I want to thank Patrick Kane for your many years of service to TISD, especially here at Transportation. Thank you for everything you've done.
Patrick.
Yeah. Our next item is the Board Presence Report, Presentation of the City of Temple Central District Plan.
Yeah. I'll just make a few comments prior to this item. The, let me get the goodie bag. I want the heaviest one. Some of you may know, the City of Temple has conducted many meetings and neighborhood planning meetings and so forth all across the city in an effort to really focus in and target neighborhoods and take the input from those respective residents and, and do some redevelopment and so forth. Aaron and Nancy have done a fantastic, let me be more formal than that, Aaron Smith and Nancy Glover, sorry about that. They have done a fantastic job putting information up on the website, videos. If you hadn't seen them, I encourage you, they're a professional tandem. I'll tell you, they're really good. But the one around the high school is the Central Planning District. And I know that there have been some questions with some of our board members and some folks in the school district around this, not negative questions, just overall questions. And we thought this would be a fantastic opportunity to have this duo here to present to the Board of Trustees. And of course, this is also something that we put on our YouTube channel and so forth. So thank you so much for being here. I know y'all are very busy, and we look forward to your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ott. Can you all hear me? I'm short, and I have a pregnancy belly, so it's hard to go forward. My, as Dr. Ott stated, my name is Aaron Smith. I'm the Assistant City Manager for the City of Temple. I've been there just under three years. And with me, I have the wonderful Neighborhood Planning Team, two members. As Dr. Ott stated, we have Nancy Glover, she's our Housing and Community Development Director, and Kelly Atkinson, who's our Neighborhood Planner in the, in the Planning and Development Department. So without them, none of these plans would happen. So I'm going to just start off, because this is the first plan that we presented to you all, although a majority of our plans, you know, often will have a Temple ISD school in them. So a strong coordination with the school district is very important as we complete each of these plans. So I'm going to just start out briefly by, sorry, it is not on. There we go. Thank you. We have a total of 18 Neighborhood Planning Districts that we have identified through coordination with our Temple Reinvestment Zone, and we have set out to complete four Neighborhood Plans per year. So we have a very, very comprehensive public engagement process where we often have a kickoff event with the neighborhood. However, I believe Central was the first one where we were in the midst of COVID and we were unable to do that kickoff event that we so dearly love. But we were able to hand off goodie bags to all of the residents and business owners and solicit feedback by survey. We also have an external planning team, which is like a stakeholder group made up of neighborhood leaders that we actively engage in, and then a series of focus groups, anywhere from business leaders to school districts. We often involve school districts in our focus groups as well as just different neighborhood leaders that are throughout the area. Each of the Neighborhood Plans includes several different elements. That could be infrastructure, you see a lot of pedestrian elements within these plans. You'll see a street lighting as a component, as well as housing parks, safety, and district identification. So here is a listing of the 18 Neighborhood Districts that we have done. As you can see, the Central District was actually the fourth Neighborhood Plan that we completed after Ferguson Crestview and the Historic District. So, so far to date, we have officially completed five, but we've actually just completed the Midtown District, are waiting to go to council on May 5th for their official approval on that. And we have begun on the Downtown, and we'll be starting on our Temple Medical and Educational District very soon. So just to briefly tell you a little bit about the purpose and the mission of these Neighborhood Plans, it's, our main purpose is to make sure that we have cohesive, distinct, vibrant, safe, and attractive neighborhoods throughout the City of Temple where the citizens take pride in ownership and where they live. The mission is very significant to us. We work alongside residents in each neighborhood, and each of those plans, you'll see a significant capital improvement projects element, private investment and economic development opportunities, as well as some opportunities for community development block grants. So our public engagement process for the Central District Plan included a wide array of surveys that we sent out to all of the business owners, as well as residents within the neighborhood. We also conducted a series of focus groups, met with our external planning team throughout the entire process to receive feedback from the very beginning throughout the development of the plan. And as Dr. Ott stated, we have a online presence where we complete videos, and we call that the MPD News. We also meet with our Neighborhood Revitalization Coordinating Committee and then also seek a recommendation from them to City Council, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission. So here are the boundaries, as you can see, that we identified as the Central District. So north is facing left on your screen, so north generally is Nugent. To the east and the south, you have the BNSF Railroad, and to the west, generally 31st Street. And then it comes out a little bit toward the south there. So we look at this neighborhood in relation to where it's located in the grand scheme of the, of Temple. And so as you can see, within a mile or a half mile to a mile, you have the Temple Downtown Core. So it's very much related to Temple Downtown, and we wanted to make sure that was a element of this. Couple of the things that we looked at, that we really focused on within this plan was safe travel. As you know, the roundabout is a huge component of that. Also engaging both students and teachers with Temple High School being a major land owner within the area, looking at district identification, not only the monument signage and gateway signage, but also, you know, Wildcat Stadium and some other identity. The overall appearance, and as well as looking at some cohesive uses that I'll go through in this presentation. With each of our Neighborhood Plans, we do go through and we rate all of the parcels within the area. We have our Transform Temple team do that, and they rate them from basically A through F. So A is something that is in great shape, that's what you see in dark blue on the sheet, and that goes anywhere to F, which is red, which is in need of some significant structural repair, maybe a point where demolition is necessary. Next, we look at the existing sidewalks within the neighborhood, and we do a sidewalk analysis where we rate them from excellent, very good, good, fair, poor, and then very poor. So as you can see, we do not, in this map here, we only look at the existing sidewalks and their condition, and this helps us as we complete the process and then also plan for the future to see which areas will need a repair. But you'll also see components in the plan as I go through that will identify areas where we think sidewalks should be added for connectivity purposes. This page here will show you some really interesting areas as far as you have your commercial areas, adaptive reuse, multifamily housing, some parks and open space. But the circles there that you can see on the sheet are identifying some enhanced intersection improvements, and then the red stars are some neighborhood marker locations. And then the red stars are some neighborhood marker locations. Yes, so great question. So enhanced intersection could mean, you know, anywhere from safe pedestrian crossings, street trees for aesthetic purposes, and, you know, sidewalk bump outs, different things like that, that would dress up the intersection, but also provide that safety as well. This, this page here talks about the opportunities and constraints in this area, and we saw many opportunities. One of the things that we noticed that we really wanted to make sure that Temple High School felt connected to the surrounding neighborhood, and so we looked at some connectivity there. We also looked at some enhanced pedestrian crossings that you can see with the blue circles, as well as neighborhood entry points within there, which we show at 25th Street, as well as Central and Adams, coming right over there across the, from I-35, as well as across the railroad. We also, you know, there's a lot of opportunities, I think, for walkability in this neighborhood with enhanced pedestrian activity, as well as making sure that we look at those dead-end streets in particular. There are several dead-end streets within this area that we wanted to address. This plan is not the first plan, though, to look at the Central and Adams area. We had a Central and Adams design that was done through funding through our Temple Reinvestment Zone. And I actually worked on that when I started working for the city. And so several, what we want to do is we don't want to reinvent the wheel always. We want to take away from some of the existing plans that we've done, especially the recent ones, but then update them as well. So major goals that came out of that plan was to create a gate rate corridor in and out of the downtown, which would include, you know, basically having some nice gateway signage, so you knew when you were entering and exiting the area, and just some basic identification. Also, looking at some create, creating some safe and efficient transportation through sidewalks, ADA ramps, changing those intersections up, like I talked about with the enhanced intersections, really creating that safe area. Also connecting Temple to downtown, and it was really important to us to provide that connectivity through pedestrian activities such as sidewalks and bike lanes. And then enhancing the gateway corridor with some strong aesthetics. So you can see as an example there on the bottom right with some signage. Out of this plan, we identified, we had neighborhood identification, and we do this with all of our plans. We want everyone to know when they're in each of these neighborhoods. It's really important for not just the residents or the business owners, but also people entering and exiting. So we looked at existing street signs and what we could do is an alternate street sign, as well as street sign toppers that would show you when you're in the Central District neighborhood. And then with this plan, we also developed some ideas of what we could do with banners on streetlights that would identify the Central District. One of the things that this neighborhood is lacking is a park. You have great facilities over at Temple High School. Really, we don't have a neighborhood park located within the Central District. And so, you know, the railroad, although it provides a lot of opportunities, also provides some constraints as far as connectivity purposes go. And so we felt that it would be great that we could use some opportunity here for some space, that's actually most, some of it vacant, to create a overpass park. So if you ever go under the overpasses there, it's, it's not the nicest place to be. It's not somewhere you would just go. But if we could make that into a park, that could be something that would be a huge attribute to that area. So you can see some examples on the right side of how some people have done that. You can see a basketball court that's under there, and also a nice trail with green space that could be in around that area. But it would be a very large park that would be encompassed into that area. But then as we developed that, we thought, you know, we need to make sure that there's connectivity from the neighborhood, as well as the businesses to this. So we started looking at park access specifically there. And that rail line barrier still exists as something, and we wanted to make sure that we looked at that and saw some opportunities where there could be some railroad line crossings and some other opportunities. So what we came up with is a rail line linear park, which essentially would be a green space buffer that would be along the railroad. And we also have this as a component in our historic neighborhood. So it would basically extend from generally, I believe, Nugent all the way down here within our historic neighborhood into the Central Neighborhood, which would be a great connectivity source. But this will require us to coordinate with the railroad significantly. So providing that buffer space along there, but also adding, you know, a really nice trail that would lead to the park for both bicyclists, as well as, you know, walkers and runners. And then also to make sure that everyone's safe, you know, away from the rail line, adding a fence as a buffer to make sure that they feel safe there. So with the addition of fence and some landscaping between that and the trail, it would be a very nice pedestrian experience. Next, I'm going to talk a little bit about the streets. That's always a component in our Neighborhood Plans. We look at the streets and we look at how it interacts, but not only traffic and connectivity, but also the pedestrian experience as well. So starting off with North 27th Street here, you can see that this is basically the street, let me go back here. You can see this is the street that generally goes between HEB and then that strip mall area with Little Caesars and everything. And so it does not have a very good pedestrian experience right now, I have to say. There are no sidewalks really. I mean, I think you have a small one on the HEB side, but nothing on the strip mall side. And all the driveways are open, makes it unsafe to walk in that area. And it just doesn't have that aesthetic feel to it. So we could really dress that up by adding a median in the center with some street trees inside of there to dress it up, some street lighting that would increase the safety as well as, you know, closing up those driveways a bit that you'll see, and allowing for sidewalk to be on either side. The next street you see here is 25th Street, and I have a couple exhibits that I'm going to show you with this one. As you can see, what we're proposing here is actually a lane reduction, where basically you would take a four-lane roadway and you would reduce that to a two-lane roadway to allow for parking on either side. This would really enhance the overall active street feel, where you have businesses on either side that would be walkable, and then you could have that on-street parking as well, as well as providing a pedestrian element that would have a five-foot sidewalk on one side and a 10-foot side path on the other side. And you'll see that with a lot of our plans. The reason we do the 10-foot side path, where we can fit them, is because it would accommodate bicyclists, as well as walkers, off the road. So you don't have to have those bicycles in the road, and it's a little bit safer. And here's just another image of that, where you can see of how we would, you know, basically take an existing roadway section here, we would add in some street trees, add the sidewalk on either side, with the lane reduction to allow for parking, and then it bumps out as well at the intersections. It's a lot safer and it kind of forces the traffic to slow down in these areas. The next street that we have here is 31st Street. As you know, a very heavily traveled corridor. In 31st Street, you know, no lane reduction is recommended, but really need to look at the pedestrian connectivity within this area. It's very important that we look at that and make sure that we not only have sidewalks and we have that, that area for them to walk in, but also that there's a buffer between the traffic, as well as, between the traffic and the sidewalk with those street trees. And that provides a lot of comfort to pedestrians. So we want to make sure that there's connectivity along 31st for pedestrians, but also maintaining that level of travel, because it's a heavily, as you know, there's, there's a lot of traffic going down 31st Street, and we don't want to impede that. 21st Street is a complete re-envision. So what we see for 21st Street is what you could, you could do is you could have some infill development, where you have the buildings closer to the roads, so that way they would be accessed by pedestrians from the sidewalk. You would have a two-lane roadway with parking on either side, and then some nice landscaping there. And the, the last one here is Barden Avenue. You know, this is one that I was really excited to look at, because traveling around this area, I noticed that a lot of students travel, and we call them footpaths. And sometimes you have, you can just tell where sidewalks need to go, because you see the footpath. So the students walking from Temple High School to other areas, they've already created where we need to put that sidewalk. You can see it, it's evident. And so as you can see in this exhibit here, we, we show where you have the businesses on one side, so we would be able to, within the existing right-of-way, provide a sidewalk with those street trees, provide some safe connectivity for the students that are traveling from the high school to the adjacent areas. And last but not least, Central and Adams, the major, major corridors in this area, which are, you know, like 31st Street, Tech Stock roadways. However, we have worked with Tech Stock in the past and able to come up with some very creative ways to redesign roadways and work through that with them. So you can see here at the top that we show the, probably the best pedestrian experience, where you would have the four-lane, or the roadway with the street trees, and then you would have the sidewalks on either side. Another option could be you would have the sidewalks in the back of the curb, but I think it's really important that we make sure that we are able to provide sidewalks and connectivity for pedestrians in this area, as well as some landscaping and lighting to increase the aesthetics as well. In this exhibit that you have here, we have identified the active street areas, so the areas where you have a strong business component, as well as the residential growth areas. And, which I will be showing you toward the end of this presentation, our idea for a business tech park that came out of this plan as well. So active streets generally around the Adams Central area, 31st Street and 25th, with residential mixed in within there. One of the things that we really wanted to focus on was the corridor of both Adams and Central. We looked at driveways, sidewalks, parking, streetscape, and intersections specifically. And out of that came, I don't, if you've ever driven on it, you, you know, it's, it's a lot of the older development just has these open driveways. There are so many openings to driveways versus having shared driveways with other businesses. And so we have some recommendations for access management, where you could close driveways, and that way you would have more of a safe pedestrian connectivity along these areas, and then create some shared driveways. And, and there are different ways we can do that in working with the businesses within this area. So that would be very important as we move forward to working on closing some driveways in key areas, and then also providing some opportunities for opening driveways as well, as long as it's safe. The issues that we see, the corridor issues that we see along this area is, the top photo there is a great example of that opening that I was telling you about. You even have parking that's directly adjacent. So people are actually forced to back out into these busy roadways, which is incredibly dangerous, not only for them, but other vehicles, as well as pedestrians. 25th Street, we wanted to look at that as well and evaluate that as it terminates into HEB. The continuous driveways that you can see, that's an example there that you can see with SEFCO, but SEFCO is not the only one. There are many that have these continuous driveways going through. So really, you know, unsafe walking on those sidewalks. We wanted to look at opportunities for infill development, basically where you can take existing areas and add new development. That really makes it a much better retail experience or business experience within the area, limiting the, the streetscape. Right now, it has very limited planting. So the pedestrian experience, even the driving experience, is not very nice, is it's just a lot of concrete and asphalt as you go through there. And then also looking at the sidewalks, as I showed you in the previous exhibit, it would be nice, it would probably be the most ideal world if we could have those nice plantings in between the road and the sidewalk to make sure that the pedestrians feel safe. But right now, they're directly at the back of curb if they do exist. So a model block, if we, if we were able to do that, you know, we often dream on others' property. And so as you can see here, this is generally the area between Central and Adams and 29th and 25th Street. And so this would be a model block here, where you would basically have the buildings oriented towards the roadways. You'd have that shared parking in the center for all of those, and then you would have shared driveway access, with of course sidewalk and landscape elements as well. So this is an example of what we would see as being the type of development that would really encompass this area. Here is another exhibit of that there. So you can see the parking in the center, the buildings being placed there with that shared access landscaping, as well as signage. As I was talking about 25th Street, we really wanted to evaluate that and looking at that as a active street corridor with some opportunities. So we feel like there are a lot of opportunities for infill commercial within the 25th Street corridor. Also some adaptive reuse. You have some historic structures there that are currently residential. So they could basically be reused as commercial, but not changing the look or the feel of it, still maintain that historic experience, but be a commercial development. Looking at that on-street parking that I showed you in that earlier exhibit, as well as providing some multimodal options. And then we, I also mentioned looking at the terminus there. So this is the area between Adams and Central, the area of 25th that terminates into the HEB area. So some, you know, areas that we saw that needed improvement, that would be reducing any conflict between the motorists going in and out of the busy area. And you would do that by adding a median with street trees in the center. Looking at the building engagement as well with the pedestrians and having those buildings closer to the roadway, providing access to shared parking lots, as well as those landscape elements. Another thing that came out of the Central and Adams plan before, and something that we evaluated in here, is, is signage. So if you go down Central and Adams, you'll see that several different businesses have a wide array of different types of signage. You may see a monument sign, which has a stone or a brick base, or you may see pole signs, really tall pole signs. And this is a slower roadway. This is not a roadway that you're speeding down. So most often, what you'll see is on the I-35 corridor, you want those pole signs, because you want people to be able to see them from a distance. But it's not necessary when you're traveling on such a low-speed roadway. Really, you want signs that are lowered to the ground, you're going slowly by in a vehicle. You want pedestrians to be able to see them as well. And then also, it's just overly visual in the area. So we created some recommendations for major business signs, that they would have a maximum height, as you can see with the HEB sign that we're proposing here, of 10 feet. And so that would have some multiple tenants on there as well. Multi-tenant sign, as you can see that we show out of the subway area, where you would, it would be a lot shorter, six feet basically in height, and that would include several different tenants within the same shopping area, as well as an example of a single-tenant sign. This is some key considerations that we looked at for this overall plan. Looking at opportunities for on-street parking along 25th Street, making sure that there is that front yard space where you can have, you know, you could have some opportunities with that adaptive reuse to have some outdoor seating areas, very popular with restaurants now to have outdoor seating, as well as allowing those sidewalks and trees in there as well. Looking at the access and the curb cuts that are along 25th, and providing that landscaping and signage. Here is an area that we saw as a great opportunity. So this area is generally, you, basically next to the railroad, just east of 21st Street, basically from Adams, Adams Down. So what we see here is some residential infill opportunities, where you could have some higher-density housing that would really complement what we're trying to achieve with downtown. We want to see more residential, you know, going downtown. And with that, when you have that type of atmosphere, you know, you often would have higher-density housing. So we think that this would be a great opportunity for that, as well as provide an opportunity for green space for the rail line linear park. So with those housing options, we could look at some multifamily, as well as, but mostly looking at single-family attached townhomes, where, you know, they have the front steps, you know, going down to the sidewalk. And if you, you have parking, it's in the rear, and just really enhancing that, that overall appearance. So you can see in the examples of one and two in the photos, that would be something more multifamily, whereas three or four are your single-family attached. So like townhomes, basically, but people would own the own structure, and then they would have that front yard area. Looking at this from a different perspective, too, that you can see the, the building placement, offering, you know, that multifamily or that single-family attached atmosphere. You can see the park area, as well as access, but also the height transition going from high, from those major roadways lower, as you get further away. And then also looking at the engagement with the street, as I was talking about, where you have the buildings a little bit closer to the street with a smaller front yard, have that sidewalk, and then parking in the rear. And this is an area I was very excited to look at. This is what we have identified as a potential business tech park. So this area here, just east of the railroad as well, so generally between, it's north of Adams, east of 23rd Street, so between 23rd and the railroad, you have a wide array of uses. You have some single-family, mixed in with some industrial, mixed in with some... You have some single-family mixed in with some industrial, mixed in with some commercial. So not really ideal to have those type of mixture of uses together. So as we reevaluated this, we thought it would be a perfect opportunity for a business tech park. Also, we feel like this area could assist in expanding the Temple High School vocational partnerships as well. So looking at this from a different perspective, you can see where we're proposing some infill opportunities in this area, so just a nicer look, you know, with those tech uses. You can see some of the business tech uses that we show there on the side. That would include some flexible programming space that would allow for that industrial balance, some legibility for site development opportunities as well as just display space. And with all of our plans, we also look at lighting. That's a huge component. So not just for, we don't look at it for identification purposes, we look at it for safety purposes. You have a lot of dark areas where you have, in these older neighborhoods, they're older, you know, you'll go down and like my mother lives in Jackson Park and I can go down her street and it's just completely dark at night. It's not ideal. And so the pedestrian experience is not great, but you know, and so it would be really, and you don't notice it unless you're going at night, right? But it's really something we want to evaluate with our older neighborhoods. But then also making sure that it's, you have safety lighting as well for intersections and things like that. So we have basically five, I'm sorry, six different zones that we identified in this plan. We identified a general street zone, so you can see that in the blue. So up here, if you go back to here, you can see the blue there. And then you have the intersection zone, I'll just stay on this so you can see it. So you can see those key intersections where we look at lighting. So we look at the height of lighting, the loom, the lumen size of the lamp size, see how light it needs to be. And then you also have the neighborhood zone, so we look at that interior neighborhood area that's shown in yellow on there and looking at, you know, the spacing of the lights, how often they need to be, how many, how that needs to be. We also looked at some multifamily zones with the recommended multifamily and existing multifamily. And then of course, the Railline Linear Park, we have that trail component as well. So we have a trail zone as well that you can see in the green there. That green line identifies where we would have lighting along that trailway so that we make sure it would be safe as well. And then also some business and commercial considerations where you want to make sure that they have backlights and uplights and things like that with those businesses. So those are just some examples of the lighting there that I talked about earlier. And last but not least, then we take all of this together and we do our capital improvement OPC map, which is our Opinion of Probable Cost map, where the consultants help us by looking at all these projects and identifying what the costs would be if we were to develop it. So as you can see, a lot of projects happening within, that could happen within the central district, just under 30 million, about $29.8 million. But you know, this is really important as we move forward and we're identifying projects every year with different funding mechanisms with these plans. So now we have this and we know what we need to plan for in the future as we complete these. We have taken a very, you know, our council is very supportive of this as well as city management to make sure that these are not just plans that we put on the shelf, these are plans that we put into action. So this master plan and all the work that you see here is just the first step. Now, as we develop, or as we finish these plans, we really need to look at the key projects and look at how we're going to fund those throughout the years to make these neighborhoods even better. So with that being said, I would be happy to answer any questions you have or make any comments.
Members, do you have any questions? A question I have, has the council adopted each of these districts' plans yet or they're still in the process of getting them all together to be approved or?
Yes, so they have approved the overall basic, the schedule that we put together for you, I showed you in the very beginning. And so far to date, they have approved five neighborhood plans. And we have the sixth neighborhood plan, which is the Midtown District. That's set to go to council for approval at the second meeting in May.
Okay.
So they're truly all long-range plans. And then the city, like when you're saying the plan is complete, but the entire project hasn't been completed yet, the city just does it as the funds are available.
That's correct. So one thing that we really have put forth and our city manager and our council are very supportive is that we try to plan out in our fiscal years more than just a year by year. So one thing that we have, you know, for submitting my budget, for example, just recently is fiscal year '22 through fiscal year '28, which starts in October, our fiscal year does. So I have worked with our neighborhood planning team and we've come up with projects that we want to identify and have constructed each year. And it's more than just what you see here as well. I, you know, like I said, Nancy and Kelly are just absolutely amazing. There are several different action items that they have in these plans that includes a lot of engagement with the neighborhood and neighborhood leaders as well as residents and carrying out programs to, you know, make sure as we invest in these neighborhoods, the residents and business owners help make it better too.
Well, I've seen the videos and they're wonderful and exciting to see what's happening in the city. So thanks for doing those so that the public can see what the city is planning for them.
Thank you so much. We've actually just started too, adding a song to it. I don't know if you noticed that with the last. They probably hate me for this.
It was in my head for a long time.
Started out with the Bel Air one and then we just finished Midtown, which has a Mr. Rogers theme, so just wait for Downtown. I'm excited for that one.
So I have, when it gets to the other areas as it progresses and it gets to, the last one on the list is the East Downs District. So how do you reach out to the residents in that area or how would they get involved and participate?
Oh yeah, most definitely. So what we do is we, so I'll just go to the schedule, I apologize, it was in the beginning so you all can see. So what we do is we meet as a group and we identify who we feel would be key stakeholders that would be in our focus groups, reach out, see who's interested to be in focus groups. Then we also try to identify neighborhood leaders through interaction with the neighborhood residents to identify who would be on that external planning team to basically help us and give us feedback through the process. But I, Kelly and Nancy literally go out and walk door to door, asking people for their input, giving them surveys and making sure that every person has the opportunity. So, but in addition to the paper survey, we also send out, we have our, what is the neighborhood association that you use?
Nextdoor.
Nextdoor, thank you. Nancy gets it out through Nextdoor and gets the information out that way as well. It's a great resource for us. We use social media, Facebook and Instagram and the city website as well. Did I miss anything? All right.
And I have one question. For the five neighborhoods that have been completed in terms of planning, is there a tentative list that has the projects prioritized in each one of those?
Yeah, so we, we don't, we haven't prioritized them beyond what we identify as low, medium and high priority. And so in the back of each, but we could just provide you with this, but at the back of each of the plan documents, we have a couple pages where we have action items. It includes the capital improvement projects, like I showed you on that last map, which are prioritized as low, medium and high. And then we also have different other action items associated with those as well. But yeah, it's at the back, but we can provide you if you'd like with just those PDFs of those so you can see how those range.
That'd be great, thank you.
Most definitely, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for this. This is, you know, very exciting, you know, very informative. And each of these different districts, you know, the TIC covers everything here. So we're pretty much in every one of them. So thank you, we look forward to keeping the dialogue going. Any information you need from us, be glad to help. I know you're looking for individual information too, but please feel free to call on us if you have any questions or need any input.
Thank you so much. You all are always just so gracious whenever we need input during a plan, so we appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Our next item is announcement of school board training credits, April 1st, 2020 through April 8th, 2021. As board president, I am required to announce the name of each member who has of that member's anniversary of election or appointment to the board, has completed the required continuing education, has exceeded the required continuing education and is deficient in meeting the required continuing education. There are four tiers of board members continuing education. Tier one, local district orientation, basic legal orientation and legal update training. Tier two, team building training with all board members and the superintendent. Tier three, annual continuing education. And tier four, evaluating student academic performance. Tier one, post-legislative update, TEC, is due in 2021, 2022, following the legislative session. Tier two, team building, the following board members, Linnell Davis, Ronnie Gaines, Shannon Gallin, Shannon Myers, Dan Posey, Sandhya Sanhi, Virginia Suarez and Dr. Bobby Ott have completed the required team building training on August 6th, 2020, earning three hours each. Tier three, continuing education, experience five hours required. The following board members have completed the continuing education requirements. Linnell Davis exceeded and earned 16 hours. Ronnie Gaines exceeded and earned 9.25 hours. Shannon Gallin exceeded and earned 7.5 hours. Shannon Myers exceeded and earned 13.5 hours. Dan Posey exceeded and earned 10.5 hours. Sandhya Sanhi exceeded and earned 14.5 hours. And Virginia Suarez exceeded and earned 6.75 hours. Cybersecurity training. The following board members, Linnell Davis, Ronnie Gaines, Shannon Gallin, Shannon Myers, Dan Posey, Sandhya Sanhi, Virginia Suarez and Dr. Bobby Ott have completed the required cybersecurity training on September 10th, 2020, earning one hour each. Child abuse prevention, one hour every two years. Board members earn one hour of online learning credit on the following dates. Linnell Davis, July 9th, 2020. Ronnie Gaines, July 14th, 2020. Shannon Gallin, August 5th, 2020. Shannon Myers, July 9th, 2020. Dan Posey, January 25th, 2021. Sandhya Sanhi, August 5th, 2020. And Virginia Suarez, September 6th, 2020. Tier four, evaluating student academic performance training is due in 2021, 2022, required every two years. Recommended annual announcement at the last regular meeting of the board for an election of trustees, even if a school district does not conduct an election or there is an election cancellation with no opposing candidates, and the legal authority is Texas Education Code, Section 11.515919, Texas Administrative Code, Section 61.1, continuing education for school board members. Item C is future items to discussion. Is there any items that members wish to bring up at future board meeting? We do have one item, the annual Tasby Spring Board Workshop, which is virtual on Tuesday, May 18th, 2021. And Marilyn, I guess, can you still sign up for that?
Yes, they haven't set a time yet.
Okay.
The official invitation is not on the app yet.
All right, so as soon as one does, you will let us know. Okay, thank you. Item seven is consent items, items A through H2. I'm sorry, yeah, important dates, I'm sorry, I'm trying to go too fast. Important dates, Dr. Ott.
You are welcome to skip me anytime, Mr. Posey.
Nothing to do here, I apologize Bobby.
Okay, important dates, tomorrow is a very special event. That's the Temple Education Foundation Academic Recognition at Vista Community Church. It begins at 6:30. I encourage you to attend if you have the opportunity. It's truly one of the, I don't know, just one of the most fabulous events we have at the end of the year, watching our students and teachers celebrate one another. We have a student holiday the following Monday, it's a staff workday. And then April 27th, I have my superintendent student advisory council field trip. We typically have gone to Fort Hood to do some leadership team building, but with COVID, that's not a possibility at this point in time. So we're doing something a little more small scale here within the city. And that's a surprise. So we have our policy committee, April 28th to 29th, facilities committee. May 3rd through the 7th is teacher appreciation week and I cannot think of another year that teachers should be more appreciated than this past one. And we will do our best to make sure that happens. May 6th is the Temple Children's Museum fundraiser. I know some of you have signed up. I think we have a table for that and that ought to be an interesting evening considering some of the costumes that I've heard for that event. And then fine arts, you have an attachment there that runs through all the different activities and events. I think that'll take you to May 10th. And that's all I have, thank you, dear.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ott. Now for item seven, consent items, items A through H2. What is the pleasure of the board to hear these items?
I move to approve all the items together, please.
Motion made by Ms. Gallin.
Seconded motion.
Seconded, Mr. Gaines, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. Item eight, human resources. One, consideration for approval of superintendent's recommendations regarding employment and contract status of administrative professional personnel. And Mr. Palmer.
Good evening, Mr. Gaines, Bobby Ott, members of the board. You have before you a list of administrators' contracts that are up for renewal at this time, so I just present those to you, you have both the list of principals as well as directors.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer, is there any questions? It does require a motion.
Move for approval.
Motion by Ms. Suarez. Seconded by Dr. Sanhi, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Motion is approved. Item B, curriculum instruction, update on recertification of IB campuses.
Good evening, Mr. Posey, board members and Dr. Ott. We are here to share kind of an update for you on recertification. Every five years, each one of our IB programs, our primary years program, middle years program and diploma program are required to go through a recertification process in which they have to report to IB on how we're doing. And so we want to share with you our updates. So here's just a brief example of the evaluation process. It begins with a very, very involved self-study process where the campus basically creates, they evaluate each area of the program and they share that report to the IB program. Then this moves to a school visit or a desk audit. And it just depends on what IB would like to do for our primary years program and our middle years program. This year we had, well, last year, we had school visits in the spring and we had a desk audit for our diploma program. Again, just depending on how they would like to do that. And so we just concluded the desk audit for the diploma program. Then we get a report from IB, which is where we are. And then from that, we create a refinement of our action plans based on their commendations. They'll give us some kudos commendations, which we get quite a few of, and then our recommendations, things that they want us to work on that we, they consider that we need to move forward and refine, okay? So tonight what we're going to do is I'd like to recognize those folks who lead the program at the campus. It's certainly not me, I just, I asked them if they wanted to speak and they told me I could. But we're here to recognize their work and efforts at the campus level as well as share with you that report. And so at our primary years program, we have that at Scott Elementary and Crystal Thomas and Mr. Miles there is our, she's the proud principal of Scott Elementary and Miles is the proud first grader at Scott Elementary, right? And then Chelsea, Ms. Chelsea Moulton is our PYP coordinator. She's ill tonight and so she wasn't able to be there. But these are the two that head this work with the support of Dr. Genowitz and she's back there as well. And so our commendations that we received for PYP is the first thing was scheduled time for teachers that we had very strong collaborations at Scott Elementary. That's often an area they get, they fuss at us about. So this was a great commendation for us at PYP. They really felt that the communication efforts of the PYP program is very strong. And if you've been on Facebook or Twitter you've been on Facebook, or Twitter, or Instagram, you have seen Ms. Thomas's face bragging about P Y P, she does a great job of communicating that. The professional development and learning of our staff was a great commendation for us, as well as the assistance of helping even kindergarteners learn a second language of German, so all great brags for Scott Elementary there. So recommendations that they wanted us to try to shift and push deeper into than over the course of the next five years was really focusing on the inquiry-based approach to learning, so really having our students delve into that, focusing on building up our library resources, which that's something that we will absolutely do. They really wanted us to push on the reflection of our teachers based on where their students' work is, as well as the reflection of our students on their own progress and their own learning, and really helping our students to take action. So when kids see problems in the world, see problems in their classrooms, see problems as they are, or challenges as they're studying, what action can they take, you know, to really become civic leaders? And that really aligns to the board values as well. And then continuing to work on those approaches to learning skills that are part of IB. So the Scotties have created a five-year plan of how they're going to delve into this and work, and continue to develop these areas, and so I know we'll continue to see great things. And really, the coolest stuff and the most important is to see it in action, right? And so we have a couple of pictures here, the first one is our Scotties taking action, they did a community toiletry drive, that's, yeah, that sounds better when I say toiletry. That's kind of hard to say, try to say community toiletry drive, but they saw, they wanted to help and take action to support homelessness in our community. And so this was something that they wanted to do. And then also, you can see connecting with the world around us, so this is on Read Around the World Day, and you see our little kiddos there doing read alouds, and commenting on books, and kids working outside of the walls of the school. And then I think the neatest, and remember, we talked about that inquiry-based, is this is really creating an inquiry-based learning experience, is where kids are learning about coordinate plane and graphing, but instead of doing it with paper and pencil and graph paper, they're doing it with Battleship, who doesn't love to play Battleship? And then transferring that to plotting, being human points on a coordinate brain in their classrooms. And so Scott is known for all their very engaging learning activities, and so they've done a great job with that. And so then we move on to our middle years program, our Travis Mustangs, and so Ms. Weiss is our proud principal, and then we won't let Kathy Cook go, she is our M Y P coordinator, and she's done a phenomenal job this year at the middle years program. And so you'll see, we did have some great commendations, and I think one of them really speaks to the board, the first was really, well, two of it, two of them, the first one is really about the fiscal commitment that we make to ensure our teachers have ongoing professional learning, it's not just that category one, that first time, we make sure that they continue to have that study and support, and that's based on the commitment that you make, fund-wise, to ensure that our teachers have that training, because it is a little more sophisticated in the middle school with the content-based training. But secondly, they really bragged on the facilities, and they felt that the facilities that the board has committed to, and our taxpayers have, has really enhances the M Y P requirements, that in each one of those areas, you know, there's eight required areas, kids all had the special space in which to do that, and so they were very appreciative. They bragged and bragged on our librarian, and she's no longer with us, she retired, but she's fabulous, and the new one they hired is fabulous as well. And I think specifically to the work that Ms. Weiss has really done at the campus, is they really spoke to the learning experiences that they saw in the classrooms, really making sure there's an engaging learning culture. Remember, that was one of the focuses when she took over as principal, was to really build that student culture, and that came forth in the M Y P commendations. Additionally, there were some areas that needed to be addressed with M Y P. There was some things that we need to get shored up and make sure that we had really strong in preparation for IB to, you know, look at those things and make sure they were in a really strong place. And so they specifically spoke about the assessment and academic honesty policies to make sure those were in line with expectations, and that they aligned to the diploma program, right, because that's a very important part of the diploma program. They wanted us to really shore up the unit planning and reflection process, and so Tiffany and Mrs. Cook have done a phenomenal job in really making that a tangible process for teachers, so they know specifically what to do. They wanted us to work on our curriculum documents a little bit, just to make sure that we had everything written down and very aligned to the expectation, and then make sure that we had a really strong student service component where we celebrated our students taking action. See, there's a common theme that you see there as well. And so Tiffany and her team and Ms. Cook, they have worked so diligently, the campus began in June, to really address each one of those areas, and I will tell you, to date, they have completed all of those things. In spite of all the other things that they've had to work with this year, with the extra things that we've had to do in terms of remote learning. And so they have completed those revisions, they have trained their teachers, they have utilized their Mustang team, that's a 30-minute block of time that all students at Travis Middle School do every Friday to really support the understanding of global context and student services. They started a campaign of caught being good, and so looking at those students who exemplified those learner profile traits, and they've just done a phenomenal job, they are tireless workers, and so super proud of their efforts. And so here's just some examples of some great things here, you'll see the connection with our Army Adopt a Unit in the Student Service Project. Here is Temple Travis being in the newspaper for their IB showcase, and then I love this one, it's our caught being good group, I'm not sure from which month, but I love that they got Canes for being good, too. And so, I mean, it's not only you get recognized, you get a certificate from Canes, and so that's great as well. And so we're very proud of the progress that M Y P has done this year, they've done a phenomenal job.
Lisa, before you get to the high school, I do want to take a second and thank Crystal for her work in P Y P. You were at Iduma Elementary in Colleen, so you were IB or P Y P before you even got here, right, Temple? But we've talked about this as a leadership team before, Scott has really hit a stride. I mean, that campus has really hit a stride, so thanks for your leadership and what you're doing over there. And I also want to take the time to thank Tiffany and Kathy Cook, they have really turned out to be an extraordinary tandem. It is really difficult, you know, IB is a supplemental program, we all know that, in fact, I don't think there's a school district anywhere around here anymore that has that program, I believe it evaporated in K I S D, I think the closest would be, my guess would be Leander or Round Rock. So to carry that program during a year where people are just trying to focus on basic education is really outstanding, and you got to remember, at the elementary, middle school level, these are whole school programs. It's not just for certain students, for everybody, and you guys have done a great job, so I just want to take the time to tell you how much we appreciate you, thank you.
They have done a great job. So lastly, our diploma program, and so the campus principal, Dr. Mayer, wasn't able to be here tonight, but we do have Ms. Sharon Goldman, our current IB coordinator, and this year Sharon will be stepping down as our coordinator. She has led the campus for the past seven years through two of these evaluations, and they are no small feat, right, ladies, they're no small feat? And we really want to publicly thank Sharon for all her hard work. She took a program where we had very few kiddos wanting to participate, and I think we have 32 kiddos starting one of our largest groups with our new junior class. Sharon was a mentor of mine when I first started teaching, and so I just really want to say thank you for your 20 years of service, you know, just working with you the past 20 years, but also your service to the IB program, and I know Dr. Ott's wanting to say something to you.
Absolutely.
Well, I was going to say it first.
You went all the way to the back row, because you knew that people up here were going to talk about you. You know, seven years ago, Sharon received some random phone call one evening, she's nodding her head yes, and her answer was, I need to think about it, and seven years later, that was the best decision for Temple High School, and that's when she agreed to be the IB coordinator. I will tell you, with the DP program aside, and I know many people in here, their kiddos have been influenced by Sharon, touched by Sharon themselves, like Lisa said, I'll tell you, she is absolutely one of the most authentic, professional, committed educators with whom I have ever come in contact with in my entire life. And you know, when you work with her, even if it's for a little bit of time, you end up, whether you want to or not, being mentored. And I will tell you, she has mentored me, and she doesn't know that, but she has certainly had that kind of impact on my life personally, so thank you, Sharon, thank you so much.
So as, yes, well deserved. So as Sharon will.
I think we, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
We've got some more comments.
I wanted to talk about Ms. Goldman also. Ms. Goldman.
We're not done talking about her yet.
No, sorry. She's a great person to talk about.
Ms. Goldman, you took a program and turned it into something that we can really be proud of, and something that kids want to participate in, and that's saying a lot for a program that's also very challenging, and that kids can hear that it's challenging and still want to participate and challenge themselves, and that's just did our district a huge service for the students, and they love you, and they love you because they know that you care about them, and so thank you for all you've done.
I wanted to say something also. So Ms. Goldman taught my son also, and I wanted to actually echo what Dr. Ott said, that she not only touched students' lives, she taught everybody. You know, as a student, I never liked history, but when my son was being taught by Ms. Goldman, I started learning with him, because she would make it so interesting that I would actually read what he was being taught, and I learned more with him than I learned when I was a student in high school. So thank you so much, Ms. Goldman.
It's amazing what you've done with the program, I've seen it firsthand through my son, who participated in it. They were so prepared for college now, we're going through that, it's, and I say it's easy, well, not, it's actually a bit easier in college, from the junior, senior year in high school, they're more than prepared for what college throws at them, and that is strictly you and your team of teachers, it's amazing what you have done. You know, IB is an attraction for Temple I S D, it's a reason to come here, but it truly is a wonderful program, that you do care about all the students, and I will say, you not only touched a lot of the students recently, but you touched one many years ago. I appreciate, you were one of my favorite teachers, thank you, and I just want to thank you very much. Thank you very much for everything that you have done and are still doing. I know you're stepping back from administrative role, but I know you'll still be active, yeah.
More time, we'll think of something.
Yeah. Anybody else like to say anything?
Yeah, Ms. Goldman. Would you like to say anything?
I'll say something. Ms. Goldman was instrumental in getting my son Clayton through the IB program, and in his room, he has several things, it's almost like a little shrine, I guess every once in a while, she would give IB students like a little angel, or an emergency roll of toilet paper, or something like that, and if I go to move that, Clayton absolutely throws a fit, nope, Ms. Goldman gave that to me, that stays right there. And so he is, you were very instrumental in his education, thank you so much.
I appreciate all your wonderful comments, I don't want to cry. But I love what you've described, right, I'm grateful to you. Had your wonderful children, and all the children who stand with you, thank you.
We love Ms. Goldman, and we appreciate that you're not stepping totally down, but you'll still be teaching at the high school, and so we're going to treat you like Kathy, we're just not going to let you leave, okay? All right, so we do have our new IB coordinator for this next year, Ms. Kaylee Varet, will be taking over for Sharon, and she's been working very closely with Sharon this past year, so that we have a very smooth transition. Kaylee's been our CAS coordinator, as well as our EE coordinator, she's kept me in line for monitoring my EE students over the course of the last couple of years, and so Kaylee will do a great job, and will have that support with Ms. Goldman, because Ms. Goldman has done a great job mentoring her as well, right?
Congratulations, Kaylee.
Yeah, she'll do a great job.
Thank you.
We're excited. Okay, so some commendations, and I just had to put this picture of Dr. Ott up there. So the first thing, I think, and speaks to you all, is that one of the commendations we have received was actually your involvement with the diploma program. They really spoke to the, they call it our governing body, but that's you, the school board, how involved you are in attending IB events, how involved you are in mentoring our EE students, I know many of you do that, as well as administrators, and just the variety of offerings that we offer to our students to ensure they have that choice and are able to meet those requirements of the program, and so we appreciate those commendations.
Joseph Stewart won that contest for the record, so.
Who?
Joseph Stewart.
There you go. So I just thought, you know, well, Dr. Ott eats their little silly stuff, so he's involved in that. So, you know, and that's just one of the things that Sharon brought into the program, was the stress relief for our students, because they were really stressed, and so just helping them to realize it's okay to take a break, to have a moment, and so that's just one of those things she's brought in. Some recommendations for the diploma program moving forward, and so Kaylee will be working to develop a five-year plan on how we'll be implementing these as well, is we really want to enhance our collaborative planning and reflection efforts of our staff, so really look at how can we get all of our diploma program teachers together, not just by discipline, to really think about, you know, planning together, reflecting on how our students are doing, how the program's being implemented, as well as really focusing on that student reflection, and how they're implementing those approaches to learning. They want us to refine our process on how we analyze our examination results, but most importantly, there's new standards for the diploma program that we'll be implementing in 2021, and so we'll be working to make sure that we have all of our documents updated, all of our expectations updated, and then all of our training updated, and all those things to be in line, and that happens usually every seven years or so, we have updating things like that, so. And then just for fun, just because we want to see kids, and that's what's most important about all of these programs, is you see some students here doing collaboration and reflection, and these are pictures that we took prior to this school year, because remember, we were doing our visit last year through this year, as well as our service project, our kiddos were making bags for our theater students, and so supporting that, and that's an example of that student action, kiddos wanting to do something to help. And then I think most importantly is our students' post-secondary success, and Sharon and I are very partial to A and M, so I put their picture up there, but we think that's one of the best colleges, but our students actually have gained interest this year to colleges across the nation, and so we have kiddos going to the Naval Academy, Notre Dame, North Carolina State, Vanderbilt, Tulane, Panama College, as well as all of our flagship universities across the state of Texas. And so your investment in the IB program, starting with our littles, you know, young Miles there, to our students who are taken off to college, really does make a difference in the lives of our kids, and so we thank each one of you for all you do to ensure this program is successful, and we thank the school board as well for the commitment that you've made to continue to fund the program, so, any questions?
Just again, thank you all for everything you all do for the district and the IB program, it truly is, it's wonderful for us to have, for our students.
Thank you.
Item C, finance facilities, report on property tax collection activities. And Mrs. Vaten.
Good evening, Dr. Ott and board, tonight we have Harvey Allen with us, Harvey is with the law firm of McCurry, Veselka, Bragg, and Allen, and he is here tonight to inform us of the work they do in collecting our property taxes, so I'll turn it over to Harvey.
Mr. Allen, thank you very much for coming to update us this evening.
Pleasure to be here. As Colin just said, by way of introduction, I am Harvey Allen with McCurry Veselka Bragg and Allen, I'm the managing shareholder of the firm, and I'm here to discuss the property tax collections for the Temple I S D. You know, it's billed as delinquent tax collections, but really, it's much more than that, it talks about the entire tax collection process. Of course, we represent the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County, which of course collects the taxes for the T I S D, as well as all the other political subdivisions in this county. So our representation of you is through the Tax Appraisal. So, our representation of you is through the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County. However, we, we consider Temple ISD, along with every other taxing unit, our client. And we have a fiduciary responsibility, which we take very seriously, to provide the very best service to you. So, having said that, I'm going to start with the chart number one, right up here. And that reflects the total revenue from tax collections. Now, that is both current collections and delinquent collections during each of the last four fiscal years. Now, needless to say, the vast majority of those taxes are collected by the staff of the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County before it's referred to us owner about July 1st of the first year of delinquency. But it does in fact represent the, the efforts of the appraisal district staff as well as those of MBBA. And so, you look over here and you say, okay, well, fine. And the most important thing over here, I think, is the percentage of the total revenue versus the adjusted levy. Now, we use the adjusted levy because after, each year, after the taxes are certified, there are things that happen to the row that either increases or decreases the taxes that are actually out there available to be collected. And that's the reason I use the adjusted tax levy. That adjusted tax levy comes from your Schedule J1 in your audit of financial statements. And you see across at the bottom of the table, etc., the percentages. And last year, if you recall, I was here. And I was saying, well, we got 104.43% last year. And I said, I've never seen a number that high before in all the years I've been doing this. I'm glad to see it, but I said, I don't think it's going to stay there. Sure enough, and this year, it's 99.96, pretty close to 100, but not quite there. I'd like to stand up here and say, gosh, that's due to the COVID virus. Or COVID virus, I'm sorry. Everybody else seems to blame that, but that would be a convenient excuse. The fact is, of course, that the Tax Appraisals for Bell County was in fact closed for, well, second half of March, pretty much all of April and end of May of 2020. Some of it pursuant to the stay-at-home order issued pursuant to our, by Governor Abbott. And some of it just out of the abundance of caution, not wanting the staff members of the appraisal district or the public to be exposed unnecessarily to the virus. I can't say that's true because unfortunately, just the Temple, I'm sorry, the clean ISD and the belted ISD did get 100. And they had the same thing. So, again, just by full disclosure, I thought that's pretty good, 99.96. It's the first time, as you can see, it's been slipped below 100. And certainly, if I'm back here next, next year, this, we do everything we possibly can to get this back to 100. Are there any questions, though, about the total revenue from tax collections? Again, it's both current, delinquent, and penalty and interest on those taxes. If not, then I'm going to chart number two. And that is the collection of the adjusted levy for each of the last five tax years, actually. And now, this chart is, is exclusive of penalties and interest that were collected on these taxes. And the point being here, you look at the cumulative, the cumulative collection percentages, and you can see from 2015, the district has gotten 99.88% of all the taxes levied, up to 99.34%. And that is through December 31st of 2020. So, the district obviously is doing very well in terms of collections. Again, that's both current taxes and delinquent collections, taxes cumulatively through December 31st of 2020. Are there any questions there? All right. We go over to chart number three, the collection of delinquent taxes. Now, this does in fact reflect the, the work of my law firm in collecting the delinquent taxes for the Temple Independent School District. And again, you look in 2015, MBBA has collected 90.88% of the taxes that were referred to us on July 1st of the year, first year of delinquency, up to 57.10%. That's very, it's pretty much what it looks like every year. The, obviously, you get a large collection percentages during the first year, and then you get a diminishing return after that. By the time you get out there, though, you're looking at 90.88% of the taxes that were referred to us for collection. And that equates to 99.88% of the total levy by the district. Any questions? Okay. The second half of your report here is a statistical summary of the actions taken on behalf of the Temple Independent School District, which produces the results that you see in the charts one, two, and particularly chart number three. It goes through there about the number of notices that we sent, title research, litigation, no, suits that were filed on behalf of Temple ISD, the judgments that were taken. And then finally, on the page, it talks about tax sales and the number of tax sales that we've had since August of 18, all the way down through December of 2020. We were very fortunate in 2020, frankly, that we did not lose a tax sale. And most, most of our other clients, etc., we lost at least one, probably two tax sales. Fortunately, and with the help of the Bell County Sheriff's Department, we did not lose a tax sale in 2020. But you can see over this period of time, we've posted 136 properties for sale. We've actually had to only sell 50 of those, fortunately, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right, 50 of those. So, the ones that we all wound up selling are generally speaking vacant abandoned properties. They're not, they are non-homestead-type properties. Just as a side note here, we do everything we possibly can not to sell homestead properties. We don't think that's a good policy, not a good public policy. And we do have to post homestead properties for sale because unfortunately, the reality is that that's the only way that we can get some people to actually come through the door and talk to us. When they come through the door and talk to us, we work the deal out. But the others that were actually sold, the 50 again is vacant abandoned properties, vacant lots, vacant houses, etc. On the bankruptcy litigation, you see there, again, fortunately, bankruptcy is not, has not been a big problem here. Even through the COVID epidemic, etc., bankruptcies have not significantly increased here in Bell County Temple. You're fortunate because other parts of the state, particularly energy-related, are not so fortunate. So, that is my, that's my report. Are there any questions on anything that I have brought to the board?
Members, do you have any questions? All right, well, thank you very much for giving us this report.
Well, thank you very much. And again, it's a privilege to, to work for you. And we will do everything we possibly can, again, to restore, go from 99.96 to 100.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll see you here again next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. D is student services. I don't believe you have any items under there. E is board committee reports. Facilities committee update, meeting held March 25th, 2021 at 4:00 PM. Mr. Gaines.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. Meeting was called to order at 4:06 PM. Item A, the insurance and repair update. The administration provided an update on the status of repairs related to insurance claims for the damages caused by the winter storm in February. At this time, the repairs have all been completed at Temple High School, Travis Lamar, Woodson Field, and old Edwards Academy Building. Repairs are in various stages at completion for Bonham and Garcia. The administration is working on, with the insurance on the remaining repairs for those two locations. Wildcat Stadium sustained the most damage and will require the most comprehensive repairs. District representatives are coordinating the repairs with insurance representatives and subcontractors. The target date for completion is August 1st. We too admitted Dunbar Early Childhood Academy, the committee too, the Dunbar, to see the progress of renovations. When completed, the project will represent a dramatic improvement to the facilities, has tremendous historical significance to Temple and most specifically to the East Side community. The meeting was adjourned at 4:57 PM. Our next meeting will be held April the 29th, 2021 at 4:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines.
Next item is the policy committee update. And the meeting was held March 24th, 2021 at 4:00 PM. And the meeting was called to order at 4:07 PM. The Texas Education Agency is allowing districts to include Friday, February 12th, 2021 to the previous missed school day waivers for weather-related closures. The board approved the missed school waiver last month, and it was subsequently approved by TEA. A motion was made by Dan Posey to approve the TEA waiver for district closure for February 12th, 2021, as presented and was seconded by Shannon Gallin. Motion carried four to zero. Proposed revisions to board policy DEA local were discussed. This item will be brought forth tonight for consideration. Several policies were discussed and were presented at tonight's meeting. Meeting was adjourned at 4:32 PM. Next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, April 28th, 2021 at 4:00 PM. We'll now have, next item is consideration and approval of board policy DEA local, compensation and benefits compensation plan.
Good evening. And we go from the exciting world of transportation to city planning to IB to get to end your evening with policy. And this sits in two sections. This first one is DEA local. And at the request of the board, the administration reviewed DEA local. And some proposed revisions are presented here tonight for your consideration. Board policy already stated that during an emergency closing, employees would be paid their standard rate even if they were not required to be at work for that day due to the closing. This new change gives the superintendent the authority to release those funds rather than wait for a board resolution at the next official board meeting. And as we saw during this last closing, the timing of board meetings can sometimes cause some problematic delays with, with operations. This policy change also gives the superintendent the authority to switch non-workdays and workdays during, when there, there is a closing. And that's when it's in the best interest of the district to do so. And then lastly, the change also creates a category of hazardous pay. And so, that category, when it's determined that it's hazardous pay, and this is for our non-exempt, our hourly staff, they get paid two times their daily rate. And one thing I will mention that when, when presented with these changes, TASB being a very conservative organization, particularly when it's talking about the board giving authority, when it deals with budgetary pieces, particularly, they will issue a legal advisory letter. That's just their standard practice. And we've adopted some policies in the past that have had this letter. But just want to let you know that, that would be coming when this is adopted or if this is adopted.
All right, members, any questions? This does require approval.
Who for approval?
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Gallin. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion passes. Thank you. Item C is the policy review. One is DCA legal, employment practices, probationary contracts. Two is DCA local, employment practices, probationary contracts. Three is DCB legal, employment practices, term contracts. Four is DCB local, employment practices, term contracts. Five is DCD legal, employment practices, at-will employment. Six is DCD local, employment practices, at-will employment. Seven is DCE legal, employment practices, other types of contracts. Eight is DCE local, employment practices, other types of contracts. Nine is FEB legal, attendance, attendance accounting. And 10 is FEB local, attendance, attendance accounting. All right.
The first group of policies is DCA, and it talks about probationary contracts. Tonight, we're going to go through several employment arrangements. And the first one is probationary contracts. These are for employees that are initially, for their first year, hired into the district. These probationary contracts can exceed one year. And again, this is for those that are new to the district. When a teacher is experienced, when they've had, and as in this policy, it's defined as five of the last eight years they've been employed, then there's, the district does not have to provide a probationary contract. They can go to a term contract. But as you can see in local policy, because we are a district of innovation, we, as a district, do extend that possibility of probationary contracts, even if you are an experienced teacher. And if you remember, that discussion was that we would rather have the opportunity to grow those employees rather than not rehire them after one year. And so, that's, but it still protects the district as far as giving the district that flexibility. The next group is term contracts. And those are for teachers or for employees that are required to hold a certificate under Chapter 21. And so, you might hear or remember hearing HR talk about Chapter 21 protections. And whereas, one of the things about a probationary contract is at the end of it, you could end the relationship with the district and it's finished. Whereas if on a term contract, even if you don't renew them, you have to go through the process, the due process, and the board has to take action to not, or to, yeah, to not non-renew a term contract. So, that has, that's when, that's the Chapter 21 protections you might hear HR talking about. Next category is at-will employment, and that's DCD legal. And in Texas, we are a, we are a state where the employer has no duty to an employee regarding continuation of employment. And so, termination can happen as long as it's legal, whether it's, if, if it's in the best interest of the district and there is no, no notice that needed to be provided for that. And then lastly, for contracts, there are other type of contracts in DCE legal. And that's dealing with, for the most part, professional services or specialized services that are typically short-term or have a very specific length of time. And so, those are also contracts with, like I said, vendors or professional services. The last set of policies is about attendance. Very important for attendance is that the district has and maintains records that reflect the average daily attendance because that's what the allocations of the foundation school program, how the, the money flows to the, from the state to us, from TEA. If you remember, in February, one of the legislative priorities that you all adopted was that you wanted to change, change from funding being from day, average daily attendance to enrollment. And that bill is actually in the legislature at the moment, going through the process. Haven't heard how much traction it's getting, but that is part of the conversation in Austin. For minimum enrollment, there has to be two hours of instruction to be counted present half a day or four hours of instruction to be considered a full day, and that is hours of instruction. And so, in this definition, it doesn't count passing periods in lunches. And so, when we say four hours of instruction, it takes longer than four hours in order to accomplish that typically. State also requires to have an official attendance-taking time. In years past, it was district-wide had to be a certain time, and that's when you took attendance and you were present or you weren't. Now, the TEA has, the last several years, allowed different, the campuses to have their own particular time. And so, based on their particular bell schedule, there's, throughout the district, there's some variation in attendance-taking time, but that, it's typically second, third... there's some variation in attendance-taking time, but that it's typically second, third period, around 10 o'clock or so, for the most part. And then lastly, some of the exceptions for attendance is if they're still counted present, if they are participating in a board improvement activity, or if you remember from last months, we had all those exceptions of, all these things that counted as a student being present in FEA legal. Those apply here. And the commissioner may adjust the attendance, average daily attendance rules whenever there's a disaster declared, and that has happened this year. And so the several waivers that we've sent in to TEA for school closures, that's part of his process of amending those rules, and he used the waiver process to do it, and we participated in, in that. Any questions?
Any questions, members? Eric, thank you very much for updating us. Again, this is always very informative, and for us and for the public. With no other business, we are now adjourned. Thank you very much for attending tonight.